All right, welcome everyone. Town of Bowling Green, town council meeting Thursday, October 5th, 2023. We have a quorum. We have nobody missing, and I now call the meeting open. And if everybody can follow, stand up and please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on, do we have a motion that somebody needs to make for the amend the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda for 9A about the cigarette tax to go ahead and have our attorney, Mr. Gore, proceed with that and get us an ordinance for that and get it done.
Second.
All right, I've got a first by Randy, I've got a second by Jeff. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries 100%. So 9A, we will discuss the cigarette tax, and it will be for a motion, decision on a motion. All right, we have no delegations, we have public comments. Your public comment, you're not a delegation. I'd like to open up public comments at this time. If anybody here would like to speak to council, please come up, state your name and your address, and I'll give you three minutes.
I'm on. It's already green. Green's good. It's already green, you hear? No. Okay, anyway, I think you can hear me.
Yeah, I think we got you.
Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight, I cancel, and I have two things I'd like to mention. First of all, I hope council would do a study audit on your water sewer billing system, the way things are done. I would like to see that studied by council and staff. Number two, secondly, I would like to invite you, council, staff, and families to come down to Historic Port Row on October 28th, and on behalf of Historic Port Row, of which I am a volunteer, I invite y'all to come down to our living history at our main museum and the old Port Row School. We have a wonderful program that day, we have speakers on the hour, of which one of them is our local, Mrs. Cleo Coleman, she's on the program as Harriet Tubman. We have the Powhatamok Indian Tribe from Stafford. We have the 23rd USCT, which is from all over the state of Virginia, and the Rapannik Whalers, which is a nautical group, go do a special presentation on Port Row, and also local interpreters, including myself. So I hope you will extend invitation, I think it's important that our sister communities work together and do things together. So anyway, I thank you and appreciate and hope to see some of you October 28th from 10 to 4:00. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bonnie, for that information, appreciate it. Anybody else here to speak, public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rick Hanley, and I'm a resident, newly resident of Bowling Green, just moved to 101 Lacy Lane, so I had a long drive to get here, and good to be with you guys and good to be a part of the town here and participate in this process. Just also, just wanted to let you know, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys on the 21st, I'll be in a booth representing McCarty &amp; Associates Insurance Agency, Ashland, Virginia, and I do that full-time, so I'm looking forward to seeing you guys come and just pick up some freebies and just have, you know, a drink as far as the water and coffee on me, and love to be able to engage you guys in deeper conversation. I do have a question, just want to say how much I appreciate Town Hall for their help and me coming, and particularly for their helping when I came to get my situation with my water and sewer and all that taken care of. So, you know, moving into a town and, you know, having to split things was a little bit confusing for me, so, and I'm sorry, I didn't remember your name, dear. Trish, Trish was very helpful, so I just want to say kudos to her and to her staff. But I do want to make a suggestion, and she mentioned to me that you guys are working on, there's something wrong with the system. I would love to be able just to get into the system, as I did in Augusta County, and be able to pay for the bill and just set up a payment thing and just make it. It's been very frustrating, to say the least, and, you know, I don't mind stopping by to make the payment, it makes me feel reminiscent of my pawpaw when he would stop in, visit banks and talk, have the visits, so I don't mind doing that, but it would just be easier for me, as I like to pay my bills by the month. I like to just do all my bills that way and take care of it, so it's just, she said that it's been, something has been a problem, and I just figured I put a bug in your ear and let you know, it is a problem, and I hope that can be taken care of very soon. So, thank you again for hospitality, I look forward to seeing you guys at the coming fall harvest on the 21st. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir, and welcome, yes, yes. Well, like I said, welcome to small-townville. All right, anybody else, public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close public comments, member comments is now open. I had a request to do roll call to see, you know, down the line. Gene, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I would like to thank John Anzavino for what he's doing to help us. That's it.
Kudos to that. Jeff?
Okay. I'll echo what she said, it's been a pleasure working with you so far, Mr. Anzavino. I got a couple things here, let me switch over to the old notes while trying to prep that. Let me say thanks to our two residents that came out. I'm your neighbor on courthouse, I'm like two down, like maybe 1,500 feet from you, so I'll have to follow up with you and meet you later. And then Bonnie, I wrote down the date on that thing, I'll see if I can make it.
Great to see you.
Yeah, I've been wanting to come down to one of those, thanks, and thanks for clarifying the time, I was going to ask you about that, because you're 10 to 4:00. Okay, cool, all right. All right, my comments I actually wrote down here. So Clean Sweep was last weekend, and I want to talk about that a little bit. It went pretty darn well, it's the last four times I've been helping out with the Town Hall aspect of it, both that and the around-the-town part, I've been on sign duty. A little quick history of it, because, again, with our new town manager, back in this spring's Clean Sweep, the one in May, that was, the town manager at the time, we were having staffing issues, as we've talked about many times, our staffing issues, so at that time, Susan Sealy stepped up and volunteered to help out with the registration promotion of the Clean Sweep event, and that rolled over into this one as well, and I'll come back to that aspect in a second, but I did want to thank her for doing that, and for Rebecca that did the map. But it has grown over the last two years, the last four times, we've definitely had more this weekend than any time before. We had, due to a little bit of a double booking, we had 30 sellers in the parking lot here, which was a little bit over capacity, so I gotta say thanks to those sellers that came out here for working with me to redo the parking plan that we had set up, but it went really well, I've really enjoyed getting to know some of the regulars that come every time. And, you know, I want to shout out to the one fellow that gets all the flag protocol alerts, and he went and adjusted our town flag to lower it to half mast for the senator's passing. I also wanted to thank Trish and Sean, you know, Trish was part of the event, and so she was able to open up the building so we could have the bathrooms available, and Sean was great to not only bring all the traffic cones and the signs, but when we were missing a few items, he was able to find the missing items in one of our random storage sheds that they probably weren't supposed to be in, but we got it all done. All right, I would, so circling back to the idea of the event itself, I want to touch on, what was it, two meetings ago, we had discussed the idea of committees, and as we get our staffing issues a little bit more solved and some of our backlog taken care of, you know, we're going to probably want to organize our events and everything, you know, bring maybe back in-house or dedicate how we're handling them. So one of the committees I was thinking we'd probably end up with would be at least a committee that in part does events and brings some of those ideas forth. You know, we were kind of up against the wall, and so we changed our format on the fly, again, due to staffing issues for the Harvest Festival, that's working out great, but we're going to need to figure out all these situations, so we might want to kind of have a discussion about events, and we haven't approached the committee aspect since we brought it up briefly at that prior meeting. As far as requests, I did hear, again, I know I brought this up at the last meeting regarding music on the green, you know, when people ask me, I say, I'll say them, there was a request about smoking at all-town events, so this was regarding Clean Sweep, and this was with the sellers and smoking there, you know, it's open air, we don't have any rule against it, but, you know, I'm bringing it up because it was asked of me. And I said this earlier in the work session, but I have been getting requests to video the work sessions, you know, that's something we can discuss some other time. I did ask before that we talk at a later meeting about an overall technological implementation, I mean, we could talk about it at that time at a subsequent meeting. Lastly, for now, I just wanted to thank the town manager because I had lost my laptop mouse, and it turns out it was sitting in his office, and he didn't throw it away, so thank you, sir, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Jeff. Dan?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, Valerie?
Yes, sir, just, I spoke with a resident, the parking lot at the post office, it has a huge, it's almost like a sinkhole, and we've already had residents fall when they're walking through there. I'm not sure if the post office owns the land, is it leased to them, but how can we get them to fix the parking lot, fix the hole, or do something, because it's now actually a safety issue for people walking through the parking lot.
As far as I know of it's theirs, because they fixed it the last time, and it was a whole lot worse last time before they got around to fixing it, but you're right, it is something that needs to be addressed. It was worse, trust me.
Yeah, well, whatever, whomever can do, I appreciate it.
We'll make the contact with the property.
Great, thank you so much, and just to reiterate, Gene and Jeff as well, a thank you to Trish, Mr. Anzavino, for everything you've done, to Mr. Manster as well, I know he has not been feeling well, so I pray everything is going well there, but thank you so much for putting us on the path.
Thank you, Valerie. Jeff, I mean, David?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Randy?
Oh, yeah. All right. I don't know how to go about this, some different things, but I think we need to pass a more stringent ordinance or put something more in there about yard maintenance, abandoned property in town, and continuous yard sales, it's been going on for four or five months on Main Street. It makes our town look bad, I'm talking about the abandoned property down on Milford, first of all, the roof is caving in, and I asked Mr. Anzavino about it, and he goes, everything's locked, and it's not a hazard to anybody right now, but it's just going to continue to deteriorate, but there's nothing really that we can do other than send him a letter, but I think we need to see what other towns and municipalities do about something like that, and I'm also talking about the yard. You may all know where Ken and Mary Barnett lived, and the real pretty house on Milford Street, they did all those gardens, the people moved in there, the grass has gotten taller than everything, they, yeah, yeah, Ken and Mary, yeah, and they went in there and they cut it, but it's still bad, the neighbors across the street are complaining that snakes are coming out of there, now it's just like a big cut hayfield, it looks horrible, and it just, it's not a good representation of town, so what can we do on trying to find something more stringent as far as ordinance on taking care of that? I know we have something on the book, we sent them a certified letter, if they don't respond in a certain time, we go in there and cut it for them and clean it up, and then we put a lien on their property. Is there anything we can do to make it happen faster, or put a stipulation on that it's, you know, they think they cut it, but if you go by and look at it, it looks like a hayfield that had 25 sickle cutters up missing out of it, because it looks like, you know, bad, it's really bad. Now, the yard, the continuous yard sale, you first drive in from South Main Street, and it's 164, I understand that they, the family sold the house, and they're selling the goods from out of the house, but they had tents up there, the tents clapped during Ophelia, all the stuff got wet, but, I mean, it's been a continuous yard sale since this spring, and it looks really bad, and a lot of people are complaining about that. Is there anything we can do other than send them a letter to stop and dismiss, because, I mean, if they're going to have a continuous yard sale, then they need to have a business license or something else, because it's every day, it's like me working the hardware store every day, I'm open every day, they're open every day to sell something, but they don't have a license, so, and they're doing it right on Main Street, and it looks bad. Another thing I want to bring up, and this is kind of a touchy subject, some of you people may have seen it on the Bowling Green webpages, and I talked about the parking downtown. We have 21 parking spaces downtown, two of them are handicap, we have five business owners or their employees that want to continue parking on Main Street. Well, I kind of went out of my way, and I kind of let them know that I was very unhappy about it, and the people that were abusing that are now parking in the back and walking around, but my understanding, we do have an ordinance that allows two-hour parking, but we have no signs. We used to have signs on Main Street, what happened to those signs? Do we still have them? Can we put them on Main Street on our light poles so we can enforce the two-hour parking? Also with that, Mr. Gore, there was about, two months ago, we had an incident where we had a dentist office from Luther Glen, had a car that was completely wrapped, and he parked it on Main Street for advertising for over two days, we couldn't do nothing about it. Finally, we asked the sheriff, the sheriff went down there, and he did remove his car after the sheriff spoke to him, but we had talked to him several times, I had talked to him because he parked right in front of my store. It's a problem, and we also have a golf cart that's advertising political stuff, and Saturday they parked their vehicle at 11 o'clock in front of my store, and it was still there at 6:15, and I closed at 5:00, and it was there the whole time, the front parking space. Now, am I complaining a little bit more than other people? Maybe so, because when you come into hardware store, you're trying to carry out concrete, I carry two-by-fours, I have well pumps that are 40, 40, 50 pounds, I mean, if anybody needs a space, we probably need it more than anybody else because of what we sell. You know, you can go to the low dose and bring out a box of food, but that, you know, that's one thing, or that, but I know it's state-maintained, and it's a state road, and I cannot specify that parking space in front of my store as my particular space, but there's a problem with these advertising vehicles parking all day long on employees. Now, if we can't come up with a thing as far as enforcing the law, and the two-hour thing we got with the signs and getting signs up, then can we put some type of a thing that if any employees are business owners of their businesses that don't park there, because I get complaints all the time that there's no parking. I had one the other day, a lady come in, and she goes, I want to let you know, you lost business of 10 gallons of paint because I couldn't find a place to park on Main Street. I looked out the window, I had a golf cart, I had a pedicab, I had three other employees from other businesses parked in part of the 19 spaces that are available. I brought this up at three different meetings before, it just keeps getting passed, I would like some type of resolve on this and get it done tonight, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Arthur?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Moving on to staff reports, anybody have any questions, public works, I don't see anybody here. Anybody got any questions on that, that John might be unanswered? All right, police department, anybody, well, he's not here to answer anyhow, if you have any, just call him up, he'll be back in on Monday. Town Treasurer and Finance, Trish, you have anything, you go, or not. Anybody have any questions for Trish?
No, taxes, we're supposed, I was planning on taxes, tax bill's going out on Friday, three of the four folders are done.
You want to talk into the mic, we can?
Three of the four folders are done. Personal property, I'm still almost done, so the date for those, we're looking at Monday, maybe Tuesday, everything should be out. Other than that, the temp that we have is doing wonderful, we're going through boxes of things and getting things updated, and she is very helpful to me, so.
Very good, I'm glad to hear that.
So is that temp the only staff you've got helping you, or is there another person too?
We have another administrative assistant-type person at the front counter, and we do have a temp, so we've got kind of three people in the back office now.
Good, good. All right, town manager, you said you had a couple things you wanted to go over?
Yes, sir. Referring back to the work session, and speaking a little bit more in-depth on town finances, we are making progress, but it's torturous. Remember at the last meeting, we talked about three boxes to be, of items to be entered into our software, it has now grown to seven, as Trish has some free time and can get into things. On the positive side, she mentioned the temp, we've had the temp with us now for a full week, week and one day, we've knocked out a box and a half already of entries. She is really pretty sharp, she's doing a really good job for us, she's reliable, and she picks up information very quickly. In conjunction with finance, on September 30th, the best we can provide you is we've got 2.6, a little bit over $2.6 million in the bank. Next month, we are targeting, at the council meeting, to provide you your first monthly report on finances, and this will be for the current fiscal year, so it will run from July through the end of October, so you should get a good sense of where the revenues are coming in, where the expenses are. I haven't seen one of those reports for quite some time, none have been done since I've been here, primarily because we weren't able to do it because of the workload. Our current deputy treasurer clerk is handling accounts payable, accounts receivable, procurement, benefits for employees, as well as serving as the clerk to the council, and really being the institutional knowledge of that, this entire office, because there's, she's the only one that's been here for some time, and she's been here for a relatively short period of time. So what we're doing is we're reconstructing a lot of things. We heard a lot about utility bills and taking a look at the system. Well, the town has made a really nice investment in your automatic meter reading system, citizens can see when they have a leak, when their usage is going up, when it's down, when there's no usage at all. Unfortunately, that system, our staff, particularly Trish, who's doing utility billing, has had very little training on, both Keystone system and the Census system, which is the meter reading system. It's a really good system, but she didn't receive any training on the system, and essentially, when we did bills this period, we were a little bit longer in tooth getting them done, so the data that was pulled for the utility bills for this billing period, as opposed to being the 60-day period, was a 78-day period. The Census system doesn't automatically cut off on a 60-day basis from the previous bill, 60 days out or 61 days out, it just pulls all the data, so we have learned that, and the next bills will be a much shorter duration in timeframe. In addition to that, we've lined up trainings, or we're lining up training in Census and additional training in Keystone, so we don't have these continuing problems. That was not possible in the past because Trish was, well, she still is kind of a one-person show with a temp, but she has been a one-person show, so we're making progress. There'll be some fits and starts, there'll be some bumps along the road, and certainly as a citizen, as a customer of a utility in my own community, you never like those because it's unexpected, but it happens, what we have to do is fix it, and we are fixing it. In conjunction with restoring the town's financial reporting systems, as we mentioned, Steve Manster is actually going back and checking information that's been run against records so that we know that it's accurate, he's doing that on a volunteer basis, the town's lucky to have him. The data entry assistance, I've noted that. Support from Caroline County, Trish mentioned that we'll be getting out the utility, excuse me, the tax bills next week, October 6th or so. That's a lot earlier than it was last year, and it's two months ahead of the December 5th deadline for payment, which is a good thing, but we couldn't have accomplished that if Beth Kern hadn't come in, and we hadn't had additional assistance from the county and their public, excuse me, their commissioner of the revenues office. So the county has been very helpful to us in helping us restore systems. As I've noted, we've had discussions with Keystone, I've looked at Keystone software, it's not a bad package, it's not as great as Munis, but Munis is a lot more expensive. It's a good package, but we've got a lot of training hours left in that, and as we ramp up in staffing again, to whatever level that may be, we don't know yet, but as Trish frees her time frees up a little bit more, we'll be able to get her additional training in Keystone so that the system can do the things that it's supposed to do, it can be a much smoother operation, it'll work a lot better. As I mentioned at the last meeting, locality is often planned up to 18 months in advance of a software conversion, and they do their training, they get ready to convert all the data. Here, it just kind of happened overnight. In addition to that, I found that, I found that for a period of time from, I guess it was December of last year to July of this year, when Trish really assumed the financial responsibilities as deputy treasurer for all the things that I've noted, not a lot got done, that's why we got all those boxes stacked in the back with stuff in them that needs to be entered. How that happened, I don't know, but I wasn't here, but it wouldn't have happened if you'd had a conscientious manager on watch, making sure that the systems work the way that they should have. I have talked to Brown Edwards, who will be coming in and closing out fiscal '21, '22, and '23, they're waiting for us, we're getting there, and they're ready to go, I'm still waiting for their work plan there to see how much, you know, what they're exactly going to be doing. So we've had some significant accomplishments over the past month, things are getting better, Trish is more relaxed in the office, she is working a few fewer hours, but things are getting better, and so we're on the road to recovery as far as financial reporting goes, and as I noted to you when you discussed me coming to work for you on a short-term basis, finance is really drives the train in the public sector in Virginia, and you've got to do it well, because people expect you to, and we're going to get there. It will take time, it will probably transfer over to your new permanent town manager when you hire that person, but progress is being made, and we've got a lot of help, and I really thank the county for that, thank Trish for her dedicated service, and, you know, it's just, it's coming together. The second thing I wanted to report on is we have another area of focus, utilities. You have before you a report on a letter that the mayor received from the Department of Environmental Quality, it's based upon their inspection of the system back in August, the wastewater treatment plan, and, you know, it cites several items to be corrected, they call them deficiencies or action items. If you'll note, in that letter there in my report, there is a citation of all the different items that they have noted, and where we are working with the county, again, working with the county on getting them corrected. We have to have a report to the county within 30 days of that letter, which is dated October 3rd, I met with Joey Schiavel from the Department of Public Works Utilities at Caroline, and we're really close to getting all of those things done. And we're really close to getting all of those things done. The sand filters, excuse me, the sludge drying beds, we are under contract to have the sand replaced in those. That will help us pull some of the solids out of the clarifiers so that the process works better. And we may not have to do bypass when we have heavy rain events, according to Joey. So things are coming together over there as well. I noted in previous reports to you that the pump was replaced in one of our wells. We were pumping at about 25 gallons per minute. We're up over 100 now. And so that takes the pressure off the other well. And maybe, we're hoping, Joey and I are both hoping, that that may reduce the stir down below ground level and we'll have less of those pesky substances that we may have to treat for in the future. So progress is being made there. And tonight, we got the updated Platts from web engineering. Steve Manster is meeting with me next week. We have our easement agreement cleared through the town attorney. We're going to be transferring the Platts to the town attorney. He's going to be entering the data. Steve and I are developing a plan of attack on how to get those easements executed with the citizens and along the line. So we're moving forward in that area as well. So from my perspective in my report, there's a lot going on. We're making progress in a number of areas. And, you know, you should be proud of the staff that you have. Sean Fortune has been really good to work with. The chief has been really good to work with. Trish, you know, I've already spoken about her efforts and how hard she works. Everybody on town staff seems to be working pretty well and we are getting things done. In conjunction with the comments Councilmember Hagemann made, the abandoned property, I've started looking up some ordinances or state authorizations to have a program. I'm not sure, and Jeff, you may correct me if I'm wrong. We can regulate the height of grass and weeds, but we can't regulate appearance under the Commonwealth laws. Is that correct?
Generally, yes. I mean, I have to, without looking at the appearance of a specific site. But yeah, I mean, unless it becomes sort of a public nuisance or public health hazard. But yeah, certainly the ordinances are in place on height and the town can abate the issue and make it a tax lien on that basis.
And we have taken steps on three properties in town here. One's yet to be cut. I think the deadline is probably next week. Two have been cut on Milford Street. Neither one of them look real good, but I would admit that. That's a beautiful house and the other house has a hole in the roof. And I've had a conversation with that property owner, his, that property owner, the owners. The husband died, the mother is ill, and the son is not really as cooperative as you would like him to be. In conjunction with the continuing yard sale down on South Main Street, and I'm only laughing because it is. We've taken steps. It's supposed to be cleaned up today. My conversations with the town attorney is we found a way to do it without having a yard sale ordinance. It's a nuisance ordinance, essentially, clutter. I met with the property owner last Thursday. We sent a certified letter. They were due to have it cleaned up today. I rode by this morning when I came into town. It hadn't been. If it hasn't been by the end of the day, we'll issue, Jeff suggests, and really feels it's good practice to issue another letter because what will happen under the clutter ordinance is town staff, and I will send the police chief as well as public works. We'll go down there, we'll let property, we'll send a letter notifying the property owner that this is going to happen in advance of it. They know it could happen because we've told them that. But we'll go down and pick up all the stuff up front. We'll take it, store it in a dry area. We have a storage building over here off of Travis Street. We will bill them for the time that it's there and we'll put a lien on the property. So we're just finding that out and we're taking those actions. It took a while, you know, for that to, you know, there's a lot of items out on the radar right now. They're all coming in at different speeds. All the planes are coming in at different speeds. So we're getting around to these items. I'm sorry it's taken so long, but we are finding ways to address things. So that's kind of the manager's report.
All right. Next, we have the town attorney. I imagine Jeff would like to say something?
I have a few items, Mr. Mayor.
Aye, sir.
So there's a couple of things I don't think were discussed last month that Mr. Anzavino and I have been talking about that I am working on. One is your cable franchise agreement with Breeze Line expired at least a year, maybe two years ago. So I do have, they had provided a couple of versions of draft agreements for renewal. So that's on my to-do list is to work on that. And hopefully, I think, you know, next month, I'll have something for you on that.
Jeff, can I stop you one second?
Yeah, please.
Have they still been paying rent on this town property over here where the head is?
I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Anzavino knows. Is Breeze Line paying rent for using town property?
I honestly can't answer that question. I'll have to check and I'll let you all know.
If memory serves me correctly, Dan, over here by the water tower, that's our land. They used to pay us for that, right? I think. So that, as you look into this agreement, make sure, and then there were some others. I mean, they really need us to give them this agreement. So we need to make it, you know, good for the town too, obviously.
I believe that, Mr. Gore, you may be able to find in there, I thought that they were supposed to maintain a storefront in, I guess, part of that literature. And they left the town, I don't know, maybe 12, 18 months ago. So I think that was a concern of the citizens at that point, that they didn't have somewhere they could physically go into to conduct business with that.
I'll look at that for sure.
And the other thing on that, with the lease agreement, right now, they're the only provider in town and people aren't happy with them. So we signed another contract with them, giving them full rights here. That knockers out from entertaining Verizon coming in. So, you know, we need to look at that because I know people are just totally dissatisfied. And, you know, we have nothing else because they are the sole provider here. And they're probably locked in that way under that contract.
So typically, it's not, it doesn't have to be an exclusive franchise? So, I mean, I don't know if there's been discussions with Verizon or any other provider.
I just don't know if it is or not.
Right, okay. Look at that. Another thing, just a follow-up item. After last month's meeting, a couple of council members came up to me with some markups to the contract for the interim town manager. Those were technical. And I guess prior meeting, council had approved the contract with Berkeley Group for John Services, subject to review by council. I guess there was no council at the time. But anyway, so I had since reviewed that, went through it with the Berkeley Group principals. And there were a few technical changes that were made in line with what I think council wanted. And that's been done, I think. I don't know if it's been executed or re-executed, but that's been cleaned up. We've been talking about some concerns regarding the existing rental agreement that the town has in place for public use of the town hall facility. So that's something that I'm going to look at, both at your concerns with the existing agreement, see if there's other models out there, or at least amendments that can be made to kind of shore it up a little bit. So that's something I'm working on. Obviously, the yard sale on Tall Grass, John and I are working on that as far as enforcement. The, that's all I have. And obviously, the items discussed tonight, I'll be following up on.
So I would be curious to see if, I remember the two-hour parking signs too. So if that's already on the books, man, let's get that. That would be the easiest way.
That's on my list to follow up. Absolutely. That's all I have.
You remember Todd coming out every two hours, moving his vehicle? He'd park in the front every two hours, he'd come out and move it.
But now, he's walking around low stoves. He's parking behind. He's got a back door, but I don't think he can get to it. I don't think he can get to it.
But yeah, before, he was parked every two hours.
But some of the other people that were abusing it are now parking in the back and they're standing off Main. The thing I put on Facebook seemed to help that. I had a lot, I had probably more positive than I had negative. I checked into some of the negative reports that come back on the ad or the blurb that I put on Facebook. A lot of people that really give me negative stuff don't even live in town and they're not even around from here. So, you know, they come one in, one in, out the other. But, I mean, it is a problem. I mean, it's a big problem. And I'm not the only one that's complaining. There's some other businesses that complain about it too. And it just, something needs to be cleared up. And even if we do the two-hour and we go talk to them, send the business owners and employees. I mean, I've talked to some of them already, but, you know, maybe we target them. If they want to keep parking on Main Street, maybe we target them and ticket them for parking for eight hours on Main Street. Because they're the ones that's causing the problem. It ain't nobody else. Because, I mean, if we targeted those four or five people, then it gets resolved. But I don't know how we do that legally. So that would just, that's what it is.
Mr. Gore, you're doing the town hall rental. Can you add that to it and just kind of clean that up? Or see if that's copacetic at all, the way it's done? Just have issues with the police chief taking money in the back of the building, so to speak?
Okay, I'll take a look.
That's cool. Thanks.
And to what you're saying about the parking, just to educate whoever's listening in on this, the only parking we have is on Main Street. That's the only parking we have. Because private parking is owned in the back and the private parking is owned on the back of the east side building. So all those are not public parking. They're all owned by private or they're owned by the businesses. So the businesses on the east side, they need to park back there, in which the gym takes up most of all that. You know, they go back there and fill all that up and they don't even do it right because you can't even get around. They'll lock you in if you don't watch it. And Mr. Webb owns on the east side, I mean, the west side. So we have a problem there. So, you know, it's just to let people know that, you know, we just don't have, you know, we have the one public parking on Chase Street there, you know, for us to use, which I would love to see us soon eventually get that paved, you know, make it look nicer.
You know, you're talking about that. A couple of things that was recommended too. Because I mentioned that we have like a public parking and it's over there by the Masonic Temple. A lot of people have no idea that's even there and they've requested some type of sign saying municipal parking. Maybe that would maybe, you know, a $200 sign someplace on Main Street, you know, telling them that there's parking there for the businesses. I don't know. Just some of the things that was recommended on that Facebook thing I put out.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that could be.
All right. Anything else from the attorney before we move on?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Consent agendas, items number seven and eight. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agendas as they are written?
So moved.
I got a motion by Jeff. I got a second. I got a second by Arthur. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Hearing none, motion carries 100%. All right, moving on down to unfinished business. Item number nine. That is in reference to a joint planning commission, a joint, I'm sorry, a joint meeting with the planning commission and ourselves. And we're looking at that as October 19th to discuss the ordinance for rezoning for Goodwill.
Actually, I hear.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
This is another challenge or problem which preceded me or application which preceded me. This was a request by Goodwill Industries to locate a storefront donation center here in the town of Bowling Green. And there is no allowed use under the zoning ordinance for that type of facility. Your B districts, your B1, your B2 districts are pretty, and your ordinance is pretty fundamental. I will say that. It allows for retail uses and specifies the retail uses and defines retail as having sale of goods. This center will not have any sale of goods. Consequently, it is not allowed under the zoning ordinance. That was determined by your former town manager and I concur with that. So we went to the planning commission under council's direction at their September 21st meeting. And Councilman Voight may want to add something to this. But what we proposed to the planning commission was a change in the definitions to add charitable organizations and then donation drop-off centers. And those are included in the report on pages 18 to 26 of the council package. And it essentially says what you can, you know, what the charitable organization is, which includes Goodwill and other charitable organizations. It allows and it defines the drop-off centers. And it makes a drop-off center as being something, and it lists the types of things that you can drop off. Household goods, clothes, things like that. It has to be stored inside. There is allowance for a drop-off box for when the facility is not open. It's, I believe, four by four by four, as defined in the ordinance and with the approval of the town manager. The planning commission discussed this at length. They unanimously approved moving it to council and asking for a joint public hearing, which Goodwill has asked for too. They've been renting this or leasing this property for a number of months, paying the lease costs on it, and they really want to get operational. So the planning commission, in their discussions, we tried to get the public hearing more, well, for tonight, but we couldn't because they had members traveling. And so the earliest date that we could come to an agreement on because of conflicts that they have, travel that some of their members have, is October 19th, which is two weeks from tonight. I prepared the public notice. Mr. Gore has it under review. But what we need the council to do, and there is a motion in the packet on page 26, I believe 25 or 26, authorizing that public hearing so we can move forward with it. It would be at 6 o'clock that evening. Five of the council members have responded saying you would be available, so you would have a quorum. And so we're ready to move forward with that with council direction.
And maybe it should come up under discussion in the motion and I'm all for streamlining this thing to be helpful to them. Mr. Gore, a retail, all right, so like when Goodwill used to pick up after all the clean sweeps, they'd give me a receipt and I put a dollar amount for the donation? So at this drop-off, are people able to do that?
That's a good question.
And if so, is that a transaction? That would get us under the retail?
I'd have to look at it more closely. I mean, if money's not exchanged for the goods, I don't know that it would qualify as retail.
They're not having anything there on display for sale of goods.
Right. I was thinking more like it's a, you know, or as a pawn shop as an example. I bring something there and I'm selling it to that place.
You define, I think the council or the town defines pawn shops under the ordinance as an eligible use. But I would think it would be a stretch to interpret the ordinance.
I think we're, everybody's in favor of doing it. It's a good thing. I'm just thinking a way to get around the October.
All right, did we hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Arthur to...
Somebody turn their lights off, mics off.
There we go.
There you go.
Yes, sir. I'll move that amendments to the town of Bowling Green's zoning ordinance defining the use of a drop-off donation center for charitable organizations and allowing for drop-off donation sites of clothing and related materials in the B1 and B2 zoning district as described in a report from the town manager and as unanimously endorsed by the Bowling Green Planning Commission at their September 21st, 2023 meeting, be advertised for a joint public hearing with the town of Bowling Green Planning Commission for 6:00 PM Thursday, October 19th, 2023.
Second.
All right, I got a second by Gene. Any discussion, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just bring something up here.
Yes, sir.
Over there on Main Street where they put the little new plant shop in, Jeremiah, I can't think of his last name, but his mom and dad own Suzie Villa Antiques. He was going to, before he had his accident to hit and run here in town, he was planning on opening up a tattoo shop parlor there on the backside of that building. opening up a tattoo shop parlor there on the backside of that building. It's come to my attention, he's probably going to bring that to us within the next two meetings. He's physically getting better from his trauma that he's had. He's wanting to move forward with that. I know that's something that's not on our, in our ordinance as far as a type of business. So, maybe we should start looking into that, have Mr. Gore look into that too for us. Because he's going to come to us. I know that already. He's already stated it. And I had mentioned a couple months ago, right after his accident, his wife brought it to my attention to cancel. He was going to come and talk to us that night, and we put it on hold because of his accident. But now he's-
All right. This has nothing to do with this motion, all right? Okay. Any other discussion on this motion before we take a vote? All right, hearing none. Gene?
Yes.
All right. Jeff?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
And Arthur?
Aye.
All right. As have it, motion carries. So, we'll be October 19th at 6 o'clock. We will do a joint hearing, public hearing with the planning commission. All right, moving on to number 9A, which y'all added in, which is discussing the cigarette tax. We already discussed it in the work session. So, what would you all like to do with it now?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with advertising a tobacco tax ordinance and designation of regional collection authority.
All right, I got a motion by Valerie. Got a second by Arthur. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. We will go to, wait a minute. What are we doing this for now? Public hearing? Is that what we did it for?
Pardon?
Yes.
We're on item 10, aren't we?
No, this one that we just did, the cigarette tax.
What was the motion for?
That was a motion to move it to public hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay, all right. I didn't hear a date. That's why I was confused. Okay. So, the next council meeting, which is?
November 2nd. I didn't read the whole thing.
November what?
November 2nd.
Mayor-
All right, November 2nd.
We remember we had that conversation the other day when Drew Williams was speaking to you. I've got some obligations. I thought your council meetings were the second or third Thursdays.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah. I was going to ask the council, I have obligations with the Oyster Festival down in Urbana. I live there. I work there at the Oyster Festival. I help set up. So, that week, I'm going to be here on Monday and Tuesday, but tied up with the festival the rest of the time. And I was wondering, and really would appreciate it if council could move your meeting to November 9th, which is the second Thursday, just this one time.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me on that. Do I have anybody who would, wants to make a motion to see if we can't change this meeting to the 9th to compensate for the town manager being out of, out of the area? I got a motion by Arthur to move our November 2nd meeting to November 9th. I got a second by Randy with you?
Yes.
Okay, Randy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, hearing none. So, so everybody knows, November 2nd meeting will be moved to November 9th at the same time as usual.
And we'll make appropriate, we'll take appropriate steps to make sure that it's posted well and the citizens are aware of it. And I do thank you because that's kind of a big event in the town.
All right. So, please note in that public hearing that that's changed to the 9th as well, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, new business. Discussion of status, status of the Christmas parade. John, your name's on this one.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet is a memorandum. It's very brief. Trish brought to my attention that the town usually has a Christmas parade. It's the second Saturday in December. You've set that kind of as a traditional date or day to have it. We've not done any planning for this. We've not solicited any units to participate in the parade. We have some serious staffing problems from a logistical standpoint of setup. We haven't applied to VDOT for the street closure permit yet. If the council wants to move forward with this, you know, I would suggest that if we, if you have a, an organization that may want to take on the sponsorship, it's a little bit late to do that this year. But we're going to be strapped to get, pull this thing together and do a good job, which would be a credit to the town of Bowling Green. And we certainly don't want to have a slipshod event. So, I'm putting it in the council's lap as to whether or not you wish to go ahead with this this year. Next year, I think, you know, you'll have a permanent town manager. You'll have probably fewer problems with utilities and finances and things like that. There'll be more of an opportunity to get ready and really set it up and do it the right way. So, I, I'm just throwing that out for discussion, and we'll take whatever, what direction the council provides. We'll get it done if you decide you want to do it. But it's going to be tight.
Mr. Mayor, I know the date of the Christmas parade is already on our website. Frankly for me, the transition we're going through, I think staff, et cetera, needs to be extremely focused. If we go on to taking care of a parade in a month and a half, we don't have a, an event person to do that. Frankly for me, I think we need to just not have a parade this year. Focus on the transition so that staff is in the mode it needs to keep forward and worry about it for next year.
It's, it's a time honored tradition. And I think we're gonna, I mean, we can always spin it that we've got a lot on our plate. But, you know, we're throwing together the Harvest Festival too. I wonder if, and in the past, I mean, the parade has been put on by other organizations in the past. And then we kind of took it over because of changes and, like Chamber of Commerce might have been active one time, I think, in it. So, like, our, our, like Lisa, who, we're paying her to do the Harvest Festival? Is that right? Is that been explored at all? She's not interested?
Lisa, Lisa offered to do it. If we, if y'all wanted to continue with it, Lisa did say that she would organize it.
So, I know we, I mean, if you, if those financials hold true from the Harvest Festival, which, you know, I'm not, I don't, I, I've never hoped that the Harvest Festival would be a moneymaker. I want it to be a moneymaker for our businesses, right? And so, if it breaks even, I'm, I'm cool with that. Or, you know, some locality spend money and don't make money, but their businesses do, and then the taxes, you know. I would like to look at, if we've got some extra money from, to see what Lisa, see what Lisa, if she thinks she can put it together, and what it would cost. I know we can't wait another month to discuss it. But, I don't know. What are y'all's thoughts on the parade?
I've received a couple phone calls from citizens that said they would assist with volunteering their time to see the event through, to try to alleviate some of the time constraints off of staff. So.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking, put one more thing on our staff. I really am not.
Well, knowing what I know now, which I didn't know before the meeting, that Lisa was interested in doing this.
Just found that out.
Okay, just found it out. Okay.
I apologize.
What we'll do, what we'll do is we will explore with Lisa getting this thing together. And if any council members have volunteers, ship us the information on who they are, and we'll put together a committee and we'll get the thing done. I said, we'll get it done. We will have a peripheral role in it. We won't have a primary role. We'll probably handle the financial end of it. But, since it's a time honored tradition, I just didn't know. And we are kind of strapped right now. So, thank you for letting us know that. We'll, we'll keep you up to date on my weekly managers' reports as to where we are on that. But we'll plan on having it now, if we can get Lisa to serve as the coordinator. Is that okay with the council? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, also, we got to worry about, I just texted chief about the road closure permit from VDOT. That's, that's a time important issue there.
I'll put that together.
Okay.
I did it for the Harvest Festival. It takes about 15 minutes. It costs us $100. And it's, and VDOT's really pretty good to work with. The chief will carry it up there, and we'll get it done.
And we should be able to get it. Because the guy that does it, he said that he'll help us out even if we are late. So, we should be able to get it, no problem.
Okay.
If I may, real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
We do already have money appropriated for the parade, so that is going to cover us to some extent. But also, if we can get things brought back at that joint meeting, we could take some action there if we need to in two weeks. So, if there's any motions that we would need to make, we could adjust at that time.
Well, as of, as of right now, we do have a parade on the books. If we got somebody who can do it, then I guess we're good to go.
Well, since I know the council is of the mind that the parade should go on, the manager has, within his purview, her purview, the ability to make that happen. So, we'll make it happen.
Okay. All right, next, back to you, John. Request of authorization to dispose of some surplus property down at the, at the plant?
Yes, sir. On pages 29 to 31 of your council package, these were identified by Sean Fortune as items of surplus. We have a 2,000 Chevrolet 2,500 utility truck with 114,000 miles on it. The truck bed is rested out. We can't pass inspection, and it costs more to fix than probably is worth, worth the truck in its operation. We also have a 2005 Crown Victoria, which was, I believe, an old sheriff's or police vehicle with 77,860 miles on it. It had, had two radiators replaced. It's got electrical problems, which draw down the battery that the mechanics have not been able to identify and correct. And so, we're continually putting money into that. And then the last item in the report is a utility trailer that used to haul around a generator to different sites. And that generator is now fixed at one of the well sites. And the, and the trailer is relatively narrow. And really, according to Sean and my observations, needs a lot of work to be retrofitted for any town use. So, if the, if the council sees fit to accept our recommendation to declare these items as surplus, they would be auctioned off using GovDeals, which is a platform that is national. And they tack a fee onto it. We don't pay anything. We get the full price of the bid. They tack their own carrying fee on it. We've used them in the past for a number of items like this. And I, I believe it's probably time to, you know, release those particular items of personal property. And we've included a motion to that effect for the council's consideration.
John, do you need two motions or just one? Do we have to declare it surplus?
Oh, a motion to declare, yes, thank you. Motion to declare property surplus, and then a motion to sell selected items. So, we do need two items.
Okay.
I'll, do you, all right. So, I make the motion to declare them, the property that's mentioned in this report surplus.
All right, I got a motion by-
Second, then?
David, I got a second by, was that you, Randy?
Yes.
All right, by Randy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And now we need to second.
I make a motion that we sell these items stipulated, using the GovDeals as the town manager explained.
No, I'll second that as well. All right. So, we got a motion to authorize the town manager to sell the surplus items. And I got a second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Both of them do. All right, moving on to informational items. John, wanted to give you all a little information about the VML conference that is coming up.
And I might note, you know, if you haven't been to one of those, they're very informative. They help council members kind of get a lay of the land. And what's even better is being able to socialize and talk to other council members in other communities and find out ways they're handling business. The town does have a small travel budget. You may not be able to do it this year because it is next week, this coming weekend. But, I would suggest in the future that some of you take advantage of it because it is a very beneficial conference of picking up what's going on in Virginia, in municipalities, what some of the problems are, how they're being resolved.
I've been to two of them, and I thought they were very nice. You do training sessions during the day, so you can pick what room you want to go and try to learn about. One thing I found out about it though is that, and I made comment to them, was it doesn't cater to small towns. Okay? So, what they talk about is municipalities and their sewer problems and waters and streets and all this, and their budgeting. But it doesn't filter down to a small town when, you know, it's just not derived at that. It's, and I've made comment to several others about it, and they've said the same thing. But it's still nice to go to, if you can go.
One thing they've done, Mayor, though, is if you haven't been recently, they, they, I think they took what you said to heart, and probably other small town mayors. They have different tracks for small, large, and medium size. They have the urban, they have the medium, and they have the small town tracks. But, you know, Bowling Green's a really small town. So, even some of the small town stuff, if you consider the town of Christiansburg to be a small town, it's, you know, 25, 30,000 folks. And so, it's not apples to apples, but you can pick up some good ideas.
They have a pretty good party as well.
All right. I guess with all that said, we're down to item 13, which is a closed session. Not hearing any more conversation. Do I have a motion? Well, Jeff Gore will make him put out a motion. Then I will need to have somebody make it?
Yeah. I, it's actually, John has put it in your packet.
I can read it.
A councilman wants to read it.
Yeah, but I thought it used as said, the code so-and-so, so-and-so, by so-and-so.
It's all in here. That's not it.
I don't have, yeah.
You got it. Anyone can read it. All right. I'll move that in accordance with section-
Oh, there it is.
I move in accordance with section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia. I move that-
That's, that's coming out. The one of-
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
3711A.
Yep. Yeah, that did sound right. I move pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A1, that the Bowling Green Town Council convene in a closed meeting to discuss, consider, or interview prospective candidates for employment or appointment of the public body. Specifically, the town council will discuss the town manager's position. The following are requested to attend the closed meeting. All town council members, the interim town manager, John Enzino, and the town attorney, Jeff Gore.
All right. Do I have a second? Got a second by Arthur?
Second.
Any discussion for closed session? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Hearing none. All right. We'll be back in, we'll take a 10 minutes while we get set up for closed session and we clear the room. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, in accordance with Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that town council certified to the best of each member's knowledge on only public business matters lawful exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we go to first by Arthur, we go to second by Randy. I will do a roll call. Say aye and aye do to certify. Arthur?
Aye and I certify.
Randy?
Aye.
Certify?
Aye and I certify.
David?
I certify.
Valerie?
Aye and I certify.
Dan?
I certify.
Jeff?
Aye, so certify.
Gene?
I certify.
We are now back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Got a motion to adjourn by Jeff.
Good.
Second by who? Randy? Randy, you do a lot of seconds tonight, buddy, I appreciate that. You make my life easier. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for a good meet.